Morning, good afternoon, good evening, wherever you are. Welcome to this session on ACP four twenty JIRA Service Management. This is a study session for the certification and we're going to be talking about service management, shockingly enough. Alright, we got a couple of folks in the chat already, love seeing that. We'll follow our typical pattern where we pop into a couple of slides just to orient and then we're going to be using, excuse me, the amazing resource is Atlassian Learning and Getting Hands On. So, we're going to focus on how we can use JIRA Service Management to support service management, which seems kind of silly to say because you'd think that's all it does, because that's what it's called. Frank, good morning. Kyther, good to see your box of cats. And Justin, you've got, what is that, a party favor? Awesome. So, my name is Rob. I finally passed the ACP four twenty last week. It's the first professional certification I've earned through Atlassian and that made me feel pretty good. And that really helped me validate why I'm doing these sessions. Hello, Justin R. Good to see you again, my friend. I'll talk a bit about that experience as we go. But again, that was a good feeling and it's on the other side of that, that hump that a lot of you may be on, looking at that exam going, what's it going to be like? These study sessions really helped me. They gave me the time and the mental space to figure out what I wanted to do and learn. And then to see what that looked like. So taking all that experience I've had over ten years and saying, yep, you actually understand this stuff, Rob, was a great feeling. Please use the chat. You'll notice some folks in there quite a bit. We've got two Justins of Frank and a Kyther already. But if you're new to this channel or if you haven't commented yet, I'll encourage you to jump in. It should be just that way from my head somewhere. Please use it to ask questions, ask clarifying questions, and also to interact with other folks. A lot of the other people in this chat know a lot about JIRA, Confluence, other products, and they have different perspective and different knowledge than I do, so they can help you out as well. So if you've got a question or if I said something you don't quite understand, please use that chat to ask, you know, let me back up or to ask other people or to help other people. So if you have an answer or an idea you want to share, please drop it in there if you're comfortable. Also, if I go too quickly through something, please let me know. I want to make sure that you all get the best learning experience out of this that I can possibly give you. So please don't, don't feel shy about asking me, Rob, slow down, Rob, back up. I don't understand that. We do also have a Discord server for live chat during the week. We've got about a hundred folks in there sharing ideas, so if you're looking for more, that's a great place to go. Susanna, welcome. Good to see you again. We already have some questions. I love this. Alright, Justin. That is a very long question. Let me see if I can fix that. There we go. Learned more about customization and had no idea how much it could be modified. So what Justin sounds like is referring to on our Help Center, when we first go in to put in a ticket, there's a lot of things that we as admins can do and some things that we can let agents do, changing the branding and the colors. There's no guarantee that you'll get any particular question on the exam. I had a few, they call it like customer-facing features, I think, a section. So you probably can't expect one or two on managing the portal and managing the experience when someone goes to put in a ticket. And we can certainly take a look at that today, my friend. Of course, please like this if you like it. Subscribe if you haven't. I've got multiple live learnings a week, but also recorded trainings that I do on a regular basis. There's one coming out today, like a quick start on Confluence, just to help people get up to speed on it. So if you haven't, please like and subscribe. That's always helpful. But today we're talking about service management setup. And there's some big focal areas. We've got automations, the virtual agent, and reporting. These are not the only features that service management would use, but these, these are what Atlassian seems to feel like is a very important aspect of it. So when we talk about this, this isn't the totality of service management. But these are some major areas that as admins, we need to be particularly considerate of and thinking through when we work on JIRA Service Management. Now for me, service management is like help desk. It's like a support desk. You might see two different terms pop up, ITSM, IT, Information Technology Service Management, and ESM, Enterprise Service Management. The first one tends to be more technical. The second one is your HR, your finance, your quote, non-technical teams. I haven't seen the term ESM used very much, except maybe at large organization, like very large organizations. So I'll just call them both service management for the purposes of this. And I don't think that split in terms really shows up on the exam or anything like that. I do need your help, though. We're nearing the end of this training cycle for this particular certification. So if you haven't already, or even if you have, if you could take a minute, there's a quick Google Form survey asking you which ACP, Professional Series Certification, which Associate Level Certification we should do next, but also just general feedback on how these sessions are going. I tend to cram too much stuff into a single hour, so I'm going to see if I can do better about putting less content into the hour to give more room to explore things. So be on the lookout for some of the changes like that. But if you have other ideas, other things you want to learn about, other ways that I can help you learn better, please let me know. I want to make sure I can meet those, those needs and those ideas. And with that, we're going to jump right into our learning. I am in Atlassian Learning and I'll share this link. This is the Service Request Management. And this is found off of certifications. When it loads. Opening up the professional, going to the Service Projects for Cloud. And under Start Prepping for Free. So I'll drop that link in there as well. It's the very, very long one. And then it's just under Become an Effective JIRA Service Project Admin. And it says bottom left one. Now, if you haven't been in Atlassian Learning in a while, they completely restructured it around early mid-April. So if it looks and feels a bit different, that's because it's, it might be looking and feeling a bit different. Alright, we're just going to start up at the top. Configuring our service project for ITSM. Now, the exam, so far, all the Atlassian exams I've taken, which is a grand total of two, don't just include the technical, how does the system work? They also include questions or concepts or ideas. Morning, Susie. Good to see you. That relate to why we're using the tool. So it is important to understand what IT Service Management is and some things that it, it does. So this course does include what is IT Service Management. Please don't just skip through this. Please make sure you kind of understand these concepts, because understanding these concepts, one, will help on the exam, but two, make us stronger admins. Because we will be interacting with teams that use this, we will have to go look things up and we'll have to understand why we're being asked to do something. As I mentioned earlier, ITSM for me is just how an information technology team manages its services and that, I just use the term to describe it. But this line is important. It's not just basic IT support. When we think of ITSM, it's easy to think of, oh, it's just the help desk, here's your laptop. But really, it's about managing a service, something that IT provides. And that service could be, here's your laptop, but that service could also be keeping the infrastructure running, so the building security works, or that could be access to applications. Now, these are not all the services IT can provide. But if we think back to some earlier sessions, there is a service that we can manage services in JIRA. So here we are back in JIRA real quick and I'll get rid of my filter. Services? In here somewhere. We can manage services through JIRA in the same way we can manage assets or other requests. And again, those services could be a database, those services could be the help desk itself. Some principles around it, collect feedback, establish a vision, organize assets. Okay. Again, I didn't see any questions particularly about these things, but these are things that we as admins need to be aware of. The team is looking for feedback on how it's supporting the organization and how it can do better. And so we need to be aware of that within JIRA and how can we use JSM to support that need. A clear business vision, what is the organization we're supporting trying to do? Important, always important to have a vision, so you know the general direction you're going. It allows the team to make better decisions because they know where they think they should go. This is something that sometimes when I work with groups, they don't quite understand the importance of. They get stuck on the tactical level. And then standardizing services. So when we think of any operational group, we want to make sure that as much as possible is standard. Everyone on the team knows how it works. Everyone on, every customer knows the expectations. And this makes it easier for everyone to get something or to do something. They know where to go for help. They know how it's going to be provided. They know when they're going to get it. A quick example, someone puts in a request in their queue. The IT team sorts through it and addresses them according to importance. So just describing the basic life of a request. And some common benefits. Again, this kind of stuff, it's important for us to know as admins, so we can support our team and make sure they have what they need. And you might get a question on this, on the exam. I find this also helps me think through questions. There are some questions that'll be phrased like, the team has approached you with this particular problem, what do you need to set up? Understanding what ITSM is can help me unpack that question and give me clues into what I need to go solve. So that is just ITSM in general. Next up is we're configuring the portal and, or project features. And Justin already asked, you know, what's all the stuff we can do? I think that's going to pop up here. At least I hope it does pop into here. Work categories we have. Work categories confuse the heck out of me. They are found under Project Settings, Features, I believe. These things. I probably joked on a couple of questions because I didn't really understand what was in these work categories. But Service Request Management is a work category. Incident Management is another one. Problem Management, Change Management. So these can be flipped on or off. You may have a JIRA Service Management project that doesn't do incident management. So if you don't have incident management tickets, or if you don't see that feature on the left, if I go back to the project, like I have incidents right here, that would be why. I also have service requests. If this is missing, it might be because it's just turned off. So that work category has to be turned on. Yep, been that, the same exact screen. So that's the work category. That isn't really surfaced anywhere that I'm aware of. It's not like, I don't believe it shows up in JQL. It doesn't show up on the portal. It only shows up when we as an admin go in to flip it on or off. We do however, have these portal categories and these are the groupings you'll see. So Login and Accounts is a portal group. It's collecting like or similar types of requests. And so it's a way to configure it for the customer. Our agents don't see this unless they happen to be admins and can organize it. But this, Justin, might, is part of that customer-facing stuff. Now, there's a lot more to the customizing the portal and just the portal groups. When I first learned JIRA, this was all I knew about. I didn't realize you could add announcement banners and change the colors and do things like that. We need to configure queues. Queues are generally how we serve up tickets to workers. So I have a queue here called High Priority. I tell all my agents, hey, you're going to go to this queue to find your work. Some important things to recall about queues. The agents can't change the column orders. They can sort them. But it requires a project admin to come in and really change these. So as the agent, I can't change the underlying query that pulls this and I can't move order of column. So as admins, we have to be careful that we're listening to our agents and we're setting this up so they are successful. Or if they need more queues, we can go give them those. Using workflow transitions to help folks out. Workflows are a constant sticking point. I've seen some horror stories, heard some horror stories from admins and I think there's one in the Discord server. Just about the number of transitions. I've seen one workflow that had something like forty-six statuses. So this is another area to look out for on the exam when we're configuring JIRA, making sure we're listening to the team and supporting them in terms of what kind of status do they actually need and how can we use JIRA to give them that? It's very easy, especially if you inherit an instance, you end up with a whole bunch of stuff in it that you don't need. So we need to sit back and understand the underlying process, not just what's in JIRA, but what does the team need to do? Automated approvals are things that I don't use all that much and maybe I should. But we can automatically approve the ticket if we need to through the workflow. Or we can have there be a step in there where a ticket can't progress until it's approved by, say, Justin. We'll talk more about automations. But think, talk to your team and just ask them, are there any particular things? Justin, forty-six statuses for an entire workflow, for an entire instance seems high. Yeah, they tried to diagram it for me in a, like a Lucid Chart type program and it, it looked like a bowl of spaghetti. It was very painful. The thing about statuses is they represent where something is in a workflow, you know, not the priority, not the team working on it. So they were conflating in-progress and there were, you know, eight versions of in-progress because it was in-progress hyphen development, in-progress hyphen support, in-progress hyphen name of team. That one I couldn't solve for them. They were too stuck with their gigantic workflow. Internal notifications. Automation rules can also help with that. So this is different than what we spoke about for the last two weeks, like the, the OpsGenie stuff. This is just using it automation to let people know what's going on. So we can have automation send additional email notifications or Slack notifications. This is referring to our friend, the OpsGenie, what I'll, what I'll call OpsGenie or Operations. And this is what we spoke about in the last two sessions. I won't dig too deep into that here, but we can set up JIRA Service Management to automatically alert folks when certain criteria are met. If a high priority ticket comes in, for example, we can automatically assign it to someone and blow up their phone. Improving the experience, customizing the portal. Here we go, Justin. We can do things like renaming the portal, adding a logo, adding introduction text. This is something that most, the time I forget about and most teams I work with don't do, but it's always something we should consider. So the portal. Actually, I got a question for the group. In JIRA, what's the difference between a help desk and a portal? Frank, that is terrifying. Four hundred statuses, yikes. So here is the portal and as the admin in the top right, I have this customize option. And right from here, this is also what I can give to agents, but I can have them put a notification up at the top. I forget about this all the time, but this is one way we can communicate with users. We can also translate it. So if our, if our instance is set up for translation, we can have it in different languages. I added English, UK. Kind of is a bit of a tongue-in-cheek joke, but if you have French or Polish or Bohasa or pick a language, you can have that announcement be available in different languages and it'll be displayed based on users' preference. Oh, nailed it, Susanna. This is another terminology thing that might show up. Yes, the help desk, the Help Center, I call it the help desk, is the overall, this thing. This we can customize a bit as well. Up at the top, I have a look and feel. And I can do things like add a logo. I can change the banner image. So this is something we should go in and brand for our team. It should match our colors. Maybe I won't change this too much because it might just be painful. No, there's no banner. Well, there we go. But we can come in here and do quite a bit to update and change what this looks like. I always recommend teams do this. We've got our topics and portals. Ooh, topics. This one I don't know. This is another area that I haven't personally used, so it's all new to me. When I find it, I go down these rabbit holes. But we do have a lot of options as admins to make the customer-facing experience a little bit better. And that's where this customization menu comes in. A login page message, so when someone first logs in, they might get a special message. We have that announcement bar at the top and we can even fiddle a bit with the layout. Although if anyone knows what this word is, A-N-K, A with a squiggle, the one quarter, ooh, yikes. So customizing the portal is usually like a one-time thing. Yeah, Justin, I'll dig into this more and see what I can share about it. That, like the topics and the, the layout, this didn't show up on my particular version of the exam. And I say it that way, Atlassian makes, say, three hundred questions for an exam. You only have to answer, say, eighty of them. So the exam I take will be different than the one all of you take. So I can just share generalities. I didn't have any specific questions on like the page layout for Help Center. That doesn't mean it might not show up for you, though. So it's certainly something we should all go in and just start playing with. But let me write down a follow-up for Rob to go through that. And up until then, Justin, I just thought it was the page. I didn't realize we had any control over it. Email ingestion. I have a love-hate relationship with adding tickets by email. It's good because it makes it more accessible. It's bad because people will just dump tickets in. They'll just go, I will email helpcenter@, you know, heen.tech. And also you can't control what fields are included. You get three. You get the summary, you get the description, you get the attachment. That is it. So you can't have any other fields on an email created ticket. So you'll end up with a lot of tickets that are missing information or that bypass certain controls because that data doesn't exist. They require extra triage. That said, most groups I work with have email and they have Slack ingestion. Just because, hey, we want more people to be able to put in tickets. Let's make that easier. So it's reducing the friction for that, the customer to get a help with their service request. It does require a bit of extra vigilance on our side as admins to take a look at. And that question is very likely to pop up, if not on the exam, in your professional life. Hey, what, what do we get when we email in a ticket? Again, it's just the summary, just the description, just the, just attachments. Alright, Frank, well, let us know how it goes, my friend, and let us know what areas you are least comfortable with and we'll see if we can help support you, but best of luck. Setting up screens, so this last bit is about keeping customers up to date. We can configure screens and transitions to collect additional information. So this is on the agent's side. And something to remember is agents and customers will not see the same screens when they work on a ticket. So if I go back into JIRA and I pop open. Not that apparently. As you can see, I'm still trying to figure out this fun new UI. There we go. I have a help, account help request type. I have two options up at the top. I've got a request form in the issue view. The request form is what the customer's going to see. And so this allows me to have different experiences for the customer when they're entering the ticket and the... Did I say that word? I might have said that word. Hang on, I have a brand-new effect that's going to pop up and help me out here. Wait, here it is. So you'll see that if I say that I word and that's just to help remind me. So I've said it once so far today. We'll see how high that score gets. Hopefully it stays low. These are now called work items. This was a recent change and it's kind of breaking everyone's habit. They used to be called this word that starts with an I, issue. I'll just go ahead and say it and I'll give myself another, oh, it didn't count. Oh, no. I'll have to go fix that. But we can have different views of the work items for the, of the request types when the customer puts in their ticket. And then on this work item view tab, I can configure what the agents see. Now, this is important because maybe I don't want my customer to have to answer all these fields. And maybe some of these fields, like the customer shouldn't be assigning the ticket to someone, so they shouldn't see a signee. So I need to go through here and carefully kind of set up what I want them to see. And from the right, I can grab my fields. Now, depending on my access, I may or may not be able to add new fields. Justin just wants the project settings button back. Otherwise, it's fine. Oh, no. I have turned it on. You, you may have an option at the top of your screen to turn it on just for yourself. I have chosen to do that just to help me get used to it because it will be forced on everyone soon. So the more practice we get with it, the easier it will be. I do have a quick video I can share that kind of details the big changes. So if you're curious what it used to look like and what it does look like now, take a look there. But in service management, I can just click and drag and rearrange these fields. So when the customer looks at this request type, they'll see something different than the agent. I can also add forms, which if I open up this, a form can be attached to a request. And this allows me to solicit more information. These, what we're seeing here does not connect to the underlying fields on the work item. And so this is, I am new to forms. I really like the idea because it allows any given project admin to get additional information without having to put in a custom field. So this form, for example, if someone puts in, maybe they have a new hire request or maybe they want to bring someone in for an interview, they can add this form that gets more information from the requester. And I'm not limited by what's in the project and I can build this out. It's similar to like a Confluence page, like the editor even looks almost the same. But I can add all these different fields. Justin's suggesting we can do dynamic forms. Could you describe what a dynamic form is, my friend? Like a little bit more detail for someone who doesn't know. And I'm trying to get better about that myself. I'm trying not to assume folks, you know, know any particular thing, so you'll hear me hopefully get a little bit more in-depth and explain what's going on a bit more, but if you don't understand, let us know in the chat, please. So you can see I have a whole lot of different types of fields I can add to my form and I can even make them conditional. So in here, I might say, well, I don't have a dropdown, but if I had a dropdown menu that said, what is your location? And they select New York City, that could then pop up different questions for them to answer than if they select London, for example. So forms are another way we can get information. And I will point out, we can translate them as well. Translation is something that I don't know much about in JIRA, but it did pop up quite a bit on my particular exam. Tonya, I assume what you're referring to with this question, if I'm looking at a work item, will the form automatically expand? No. So when a new ticket comes in, if a form is attached to it, it'll be collapsed. You'll have to click this little arrow like that. It'll look like this. It'll just say there's an attached form and you'll have to open it. I haven't found a way, Tonya, at this point, to make that stay open. Anna Marie, thank you for jumping in and helping your partner here, or your teammate. Alright. Let's back on up. Thank you, Help Center. Streamlining with forms, keep them simple. The biggest complaint I've heard about forms is Tonya's question. They don't automatically expand. It's very easy for an agent to miss a form if they're not looking for that expand button. A knowledge base. I think we had an entire session on this. I won't dig too deep into knowledge bases. But as we enter a work item, Confluence, Atlassian's collaboration knowledge-based software can serve up information. So we can, we can see here, someone typed in the word iPhone and it's going to say, hey, there's an article over here that might help you. Do you want to go check it out? This connection also showed up a bit on the exam and it makes sense to me. The point of, the service desk is to help people get what they need and part of that is the self-service. Service level agreements, another area we dug into for over an hour. I really like these. Once I finally understand how they work, that made it much easier, but this is basically that ticking clock on a work item that helps ensure that we all agreed it will take Rob an hour to do this training. It took him an hour and a half. We have to go figure out why. How do we help Rob meet that target? Now, the thing to remember about SLAs is they, if there are multiple goals, so four hours for high priority, ten hours for low priority, whichever goal is satisfied first is the one the ticket gets. So if you have multiple goals, read them top-down and the one on the top is the one that goes first. This can be a bit of a logic question if there's multiple criteria. Location is a task and it's high priority. So take your time if you see questions about SLAs and make sure you really understand what's going on because it can be just confusing enough where you might trip over it a little bit. Alright, automation rules. There's a lot to automations. We won't be super experts with automations by the end of this and I say that because I am definitely not a super, super expert on these. But we want to understand some basics and there were automation-related questions and I need to be better about using automations in my life. In my life, in my JIRA projects, because there's a lot of manual stuff that my team has to do that I can help them with if I automate it. Now, when I think of automations, I think of... Now, when I think of automations, I think of, if I can write down a step-by-step guide and someone can do it who's never seen Jira. That's what the automation does. It's very literal. It only does what we tell it. And this is true for almost any systems automations. Uh, we'll see different scripture things, but it just follows a set of instructions. There are some examples here. Um. You know, uh, an auto reply from the system is a very common one. I recall in the past that this will trigger your time to first comment SLA. So just be aware that automations can interact with other features in ways maybe you don't want. For example, if I have an SLA where Anna Marie has to, is the agent and she's supposed to respond in an hour. If there's an automation that automatically responds immediately. Um, that's going to trigger that SLA and it'll be satisfied. Uh, Tonya's got a great, I'll call it a hack here. Uh, chat GPT, co-pilot, any of the gen AI tools can be very helpful creating automations. If you are on, uh, Jira cloud premium or enterprise. You'll actually also get access to, where are they? There we go. Uh, Atlassian intelligence AI, I love the name, uh, to help you build automations. So just up at the top, this instance happens to be premium. So I can say I need an automation. This is a terrible example. Assign tickets to Rob every Monday. Um, this gen AI can help me figure that out. Um, okay, I'll come back to this screen a bit and talk a bit about what's going on. Um. That's not where I wanted to go. Go away. Other common use cases, resolving requests automatically if there's no activity. So again, thinking through in my support desk, if Justin had put in a ticket and I said, hey, Justin, did this answer your question? And then a week later, he hasn't responded. Let's just have the system close that ticket and send him a message saying, hey, we understand you're all set. We're going to close this out. Uh, routing tickets automatically. I use this one quite a bit to assign tickets on a round robin basis. So if we have a team of five people and a ticket comes in, I don't want to have to go assign it to team member number one. The system just does that for me. The next ticket then goes to team number two and three and four and five, et cetera. So there's a lot of different things automations can do. Uh, the best advice I can provide to getting comfortable with them is to come into the automation menu and just start playing with them. Uh, when you first come here, there's a templates menu. And take a look at these templates. You can search through them. I just tend to scroll and see what exists. And this helps me break out of my self-imposed silo. Because it's going to show me use cases that I haven't thought about yet. For example, I can set the security level on a work item. Uh, by the request type. Now that's pretty interesting because I don't use security levels right now. So, oh, now I know a security level is a thing and here's how I can automate it. So I get a lot of inspiration out of these, I'll call them generic templates, uh, but they can also be a starting point. Oh, excuse me. Uh, and of course we have, you'll hear me say this again, this wonderful Discord server. Uh, where you can kick around ideas for automations or troubleshoot. Um, because it's very easy for me to get stuck down a rabbit hole of trying to make it work. And if I just have someone to talk to you for five minutes, I can figure it out pretty quickly. Uh, now automations are made up of a couple of things. Um. Okay, here's one that's telling us. I find it interesting. It's giving specific, uh, automations to build here. Okay, sure. Um. All right. So we can trigger based on SLAs. Now this can be important to teams, especially if they're more sensitive to SLA breaches. I tend to work at places where for some reason, the SLA isn't the main metric they're trying to hit. And for me, that's kind of backwards. The SLA exists because we've agreed with the business that we'll solve this in two hours. So we should be very, very concerned if we're not solving it in two hours. Uh, let's just pop in here real quick. And I'm just going to build one from scratch. So I'm going to click create rule, create from scratch. Now, an important thing to consider with automations, and this is a, I'll go back one screen. I can see there's a global administration button. I only see this because I have org admin permissions here. If I make a rule and I'm only a project admin, that rule only runs within the project. So the scope or what it can impact is just this particular project. So keep that in mind as you're building these. You can build global rules, but you have to have global access. So there's some groups I work with that have multiple service desk projects and they want an automation to hit all of those. They have to work with their org admin if they aren't one themselves to make that happen. Uh, there's three parts to every automation. The first is the trigger, what tells the system to do something? And all these green things are triggers and you can see there's a lot of them. Uh, we don't need to memorize triggers. Like I know some off the top of my head, like work item created or comment added because I use them. Uh, you can just search through them. So I'll just type in SLA. And I've got one about threshold breaching. And every trigger will have different options. So as we're configuring it, we just need to consider which SLA do we want it to follow? And if it will breach in the next 30 minutes. So I have to have a trigger. I have to have an action. What's it going to do? So maybe I'll put an action in here and I want to comment. Comment on work item. Uh, red alert, about to expire. This is a very simplistic example, but if I turn this on, this is now going to start running and it's going to start putting these comments when that time to first response gets to a certain threshold. In the middle, I can add conditions. And so this would be talking to my team, hey, we don't need it to, we don't need this for every request type. Maybe we only need it for particular, uh, request types that are sensitive or need extra attention. Just account help. And so now this is going, going, it's going to trigger whenever that threshold reaches, but it's only going to continue for account help. So this is where for automations, it's important that we talk to our team and understand what we needed to do. You know, do we need that automation to change a status when the SLA is breached? Team, what do you think about that? No? Okay. Hey, team, what else, you know, so taking the time to consider why we're building it in, for me is a lot more valuable than actually building the thing. Oh, look at that. They even have the one that they did. Awesome. Uh, another use case is auto assigning work. Uh, this is very common in Jira service management. Let me just delete all this. Bloop, bloop, bloop. Um. So issue created every time an issue is made, then I want it to be assigned. So I have an assign issue action. And this one has a lot of interesting, uh, options. So it could be as, assigned it to someone in a group. And then I have options around how it's assigned. Make sure everyone has the same number of tickets. Just randomly give it to someone. You know, go through the list, round robin style. I use this one quite a bit because my team has told me, hey, Rob, we need to make sure all of our agents have about the same number of work items to work on. Uh, and we, we don't want to overload them, but we also don't want to manually do this. So I say, great, you know, Jira can do that. One thing to be aware of as you're working with, uh, agents, Jira has no built-in out of office feature. So this means if, I'll use Susanna and I'll get your comment in just a minute. Um, if Susanna is out of the office, Jira will still assign them work items, even though they're not there. There are add-ons that support this, but just natively, there's no out of office. You can use conditional sections as to show your fields based on other field values. Could you help me understand that a bit, Suzanne? I'm not exactly tracking conditional sections meaning, oh, are we still talking about forums? Please let me know if you're still on forums because then it clicks a little bit more in my mind. This is the biggest challenge I have Frank with auto assigning with an automation is because there is no out of office check. Um, there's no way to easily do it. Now there's ways around it. Um, you know, you can remove the user from the group. You can remove the user from a defined list. Um, but someone has to manage that. So ideally the agent would just say, I'm out of the office or it's on my calendar. Um, but the solve in the short term is to have a human admin come in and change these things up, which is very annoying. Uh, here's a non-IT, uh, thing that we can do. Well, I guess onboarding is sometimes IT. Um. But we can have, uh, the automation trigger things like building other work items. So I think the point with a lot of this is keep in mind that when we think about automations, we're not limited to just add a comment or send a notification. There are a lot of different actions that it can take and it doesn't only have to take a single action. I could have it create a work item in an entirely different project to go do something. And so I might, the example here is send this to the facilities team to give them access to the building. I might then build another work item that I give to a different team that tells them to do something else. And so I can keep connecting or adding these things. So this is all about understanding my team's needs. So you'll get questions around, how do you think through and build automations? But you'll also get screenshots of an automation and it might ask you, what's this going to do? So this is where that hands-on experience, like get in here and play with automations, look at the templates, set some up if you haven't yet and just see what happens is really important. Uh, do do. Wish they had options. Did you mean like the balanced workload ones, Justin? Uh, thank you for clarifying, Susanna. Forms, you know, again, to be transparent are a weakness of mine, just because I haven't happened to have used them. So that's why I'm glad I'm doing these study sessions because it's exposing me to these things that I, that are very useful, that many teams get benefits from that I'm robbing myself of because I don't know about. Uh, Frank, would love with a connection to Workday or hi Bob. There are, uh, marketplace apps that help do this. Um. I worked at a place where you, there was an out of office, uh, add-on within Jira. So teams would just say when they're out. Um, really quickly popping back in here and then I need to go get over to, uh. I think all this does is when a worker's added, so this would be the higher event in Workday. Are there other, nope, just worker added. So all this is going to do, and I, you know, can't connect this because I don't have Workday. Um, just reading this, Frank, it's only when someone is hired into Workday. So it's not going to check later, did some status change in Workday? It's just saying, hey, new worker, let's go do something with them. All right, our virtual service agent, um. Curious if you use the service agent. Um, and what your experience with it is. I have been using it for, I think six months we've had one turned on. Um. I need to put more time into it honestly, and I'll talk about some of the challenges I've run into. Um, but the virtual service agent is different from Rovo. Um, it's easy to get them conflated and mixed because it's artificial intelligence. This does require the premium, uh, parts of this does require, uh, premium cloud because it's doing things like using Atlassian intelligence, uh, to go find information. Now, the agent is just a, well, how do I describe this without saying it's just an agent? Uh, it's just a bit of software that runs to respond to requests. And so this can exist within a Slack channel. This can exist on the portal. And people can interact with it and talk to it. And then it follows these, uh, paths, these workflows essentially to get to an answer. Now the first thing is the intent. So when I think about setting up an agent, I have to think, what is the thing it is trying to help with? Now, each project will have its own agent and each agent can have different intents. Intent should be as granular as you can get them. Because if there's overlap, the agent won't know which one to pick. Again, this isn't a human who can reason through something. It only knows what it's been taught. So its intent might, is a bunch of phrases that might be, I can't access my account, my password expired, I don't know my password. And that all gets them to password reset. And so you can train the agent, you teach it these phrases to help it understand what's going on. AI answers is something else. Again, this uses Atlassian intelligence that uses generative AI to help answer questions based on connected knowledge base articles. I don't know why they put those two things at the top. Two way, uh, two core ways to automate responses. Okay. Now intents, um, are connected to flows. I called them workflows earlier, conversation flows. This is just a, maybe we'll jump into this in a minute. Um. It's just a pathway you define and it could just be the, uh, bot responds with a message. It could be the bot asks for additional information or gives them options to select from. But it, it guides the discussion down to an end result and that end result is either that person saying, yes, you've helped me, or it's saying, no, I need a ticket. And this is where I spend a lot of time mapping out, like on a whiteboard, what is the flow and what is my ideal state? Now, these can be changed at any time and we should be going in as admins and reviewing our metrics and then updating the flows to make sure they're solving the requests properly. Now admins can go in, uh, and build out these intents. So if I pop over to Jira real quick. Under channels and self-service. I've got my virtual service agents. And here I can see my intents and I'll just click create intent. And on the right, I've got all these templates. Now it's got all these in the catalog. These are all the, the ones that they just have. So let's say we've got something around Slack channels. I'll click on that. And it's put in all this information. This is just a starting point. And now I can see the training phrases. Each one of these is something that would tell this agent, this person has a challenge with Slack. Whoop, sorry, Frank's message is still up there. Let me get rid of that. Uh, so each one of these things could be typed in and each one of these things then signals to this agent, hey, they have a question or a challenge related to Slack. Now I can come in here and I can remove these if I don't like them. Or I can add new ones. So when I create an agent, I'm really thinking through, what are the training phrases or what are the intents? What is it trying to help with? And then what are the training phrases that support that? After that, I get a flow. So after it's determined this relates to Slack, what does it do? Oh, it's going to send a message. You have a Slack problem. And then it's going to offer these choices. Now I can add different branches to this. Oh, they've added more things. Uh. There's three new things. This makes me happy. It can now run an automation. That's a big one. Um, but I can offer it more choices. Which office are you in? Which floor are you on? For example. I can have it solicit information. Or I can do things like update the request type automation rules. So I think of this a little bit like an automation or like a work item. What is the flow of this conversation? And then it's going to end either in resolve. The customer says, yes, you've helped me, or it's going to go make a work item for me. Um, it is particularly strong in types of requests that you can define start to finish. So if you can write down the, the pathway, someone would go to get help for something, the virtual agent is a great way to deflect or prevent the need for a ticket. Uh, and here we can see kind of what it looks like talking to it. We'll, uh, I don't know if we'll have time to flip one on right now, but it looks more like a chat with someone. Um, and helps again, get the customer to their own answer. Now, if you have Atlassian intelligence, you can use it to search through confluence to pull information in. And this is where it extends beyond just building the intents. If the agent can't match an intent, it might then go look in confluence where you've told it to go search for information to get things. Uh, sure, we'll save that. So under my virtual agent settings on the left here. I can see what it's been connected to. It's connected to this particular portal. I haven't turned it on in the help center. It's not connected to Slack, et cetera. In environments I work and I tend to have Slack, so you can have the agent sit in a channel and respond and work with people directly, which is if it's set up properly, more or less useful. But if I open up the portal. If I open up the portal. I'll get this bar at the top to kind of guide me into the agent. So then I can click on this chat and I'll now be talking to the agent. This one is not set up very well, so I really don't know what's going to happen. Hi. And then over time, the agent will train itself and get better at identifying things based on feedback. Okay, yeah, we haven't set this up, so I'm going to stop this demo before we, uh, end up down some very bizarre rabbit hole. Uh, this quick diagram shows us if there's an intent, an intent, the agent will attempt to match it. If there's no intent that it can find, it tries to go find it in Atlassian intelligent. And here we can see that reminder, we need AI to use the service. Um, I think I had a question. It's like, why is the virtual service agent not available? And this was the answer. Um, so again, anytime we see boxes like this, we definitely want to be studying them and remembering them. Um, because they're telling us not so subtly, hey, you, you should know this. Um, can take, yeah, configuring flows. Uh, uh, again, I, I have whiteboarded this out either in a confluence whiteboard or on a physical one, so I can understand the flow of. Uh, uh, again, I, I've whiteboarded this out either in a Confluence whiteboard or on a physical one, so I can understand the flow of the conversation I would have. And it, the more time we put into this planning, the intent planning and the standard flow or, and the flow planning. Uh, the better our agent will be. It's just like training a human. If you just throw them into the help desk, they'll figure stuff out, but it'll be kind of messy. Whereas if you give them a lot of support and a lot of time planning upfront, it's gonna go much easier because it'll be set up for success. There is a way to keep the agent in test mode. Uh, and this is where you as the admin can go work with it. You'll see it's active in the, in test mode in Jira and in the Slack channel, in the Slack test channel. Uh, but customers can't use it. So this gives you an opportunity to work with the agent to see what'll happen. Typically, when that happens, if I can, I get So here I can see the status is test for these two. And now down at the bottom, I have a test mode button. So this will be something I spend a lot of time in, talking to the agent to understand how it works, to see where I can poke holes in it and where I can make it stronger. Uh, training them, these are all of those phrases. Now, these are important callouts. Like any AI, it, that data goes somewhere. Um, this particular information is not shared with other customers. So as people use your agents and as you update it, this just stays with your organization. So that's on the security side. The documentation links. Are you referring to the ACP four twenty stuff, Frank? So over time, the agent will get better at recognizing things because it's getting historical data. It's getting suggestions. It's getting other information that isn't just me typing in phrases. So at the start, it can seem kind of clunky and doesn't work exactly well. Uh, but over time, kind of like a human, it'll get better at recognizing things. Um, all of this is just boiling down to training the agent with these phrases. And if I go back into my agent. In any given intent, I have the training tab. And again, this is something I review regularly. I'll sit down and brainstorm with my team, hey, we have this Slack request issue. What are all the possible things someone could type in that relate to it? And I just put it all in here and then over time I'll come back and double check, hey, is this really what I want? Maybe I want a different intent for Slack channel. And then I pull out all the Slack channel references here and have a different intent called Slack channel. Well, that was a bad example because this one's about Slack channel. Maybe it's about, uh, I don't know. Errors in Slack. There we go. Or making the Slack channel private. That might have been a better example. Some guidance on effective training phrases. Uh, they recommend about twenty to start with. I did not know this. Um, and I think I had three or four when I first started and that made my agent very inaccurate. Uh, so taking time to put more in there gives the agent something to start with and something to, to reference when it's trying to help out someone. We though, as ad, human admins, need to go do homework. Going through and reading work items, going through and talking to our team, just like we would set up an SLA, we wouldn't do without our team's input. Uh, we would wanna talk to them about building these bots uh, to update. And then as I've mentioned a couple of times, keep an eyeball on the agent. If it looks like it's misfiring, if it looks like it needs help. There is a performance tab, which I think is blank in this instance. Uh, but you do get some metrics that'll help you understand how it's going. And so this can then help you tweak the agent. So don't be afraid to go in and change it as you go. Going kind of quick here, I only have a few more minutes. We can connect knowledge bases to Jira Service Management. And we can then tie that into the virtual service agent. So again, if we go back to the top, we had that very brief diagram. If it can't match the intent, it's gonna go into Atlassian Intelligence and try and find the answer. So it'll try and direct someone if it can. It also ties into Slack channels. Again, this is a use case I use quite a bit, just like a general support channel. The problem I've found with it is responses in Slack to it aren't pulled onto the work item. So if Frank puts in a, a question in there about the links missing from the PDF and I respond, that'll go to Slack. But if Frank responds to that, it stays in Slack. I don't see it on the work item. And so that's just a frustration. Uh, and last touch point before we have a few more slides, AI does not get info, info from images. This kind of makes sense. Oh, thank you for letting me know, Tonya. I'll have to check that out. I had to move everything back one week and I wonder if I made a whoopsie. Thank you for letting me know. And we expand, we added another incident management session and so everything shuffled back one week. I thought I had caught them all. All right. Now, there's a ton of virtual agents. I have an entire Udemy course on it. It's two, a two-hour deep dive into them. Um, there's a discount code here if anyone's interested. Uh, you certainly don't need this for the exam. Uh, but if you're interested in learning more, this is kind of a deep dive into each part of it. Uh, again, I've been using them about six months and found them very useful. And I'm constantly looking for more ways to leverage them because they can deflect a large number of the work items that my team doesn't have to deal with. Uh, so just a quick shout out to this course on virtual agents. Again, two hours, four times as much information as we just got through here. That's about all for service management. Uh, again, that's not everything around service management in Jira. That's just what Atlassian kind of groups in there. I did see a number of questions around that on the exam, uh, but there are other topics around it, workflows, things like that. Uh, next up, we've got Next Friday, which should be Assets. Antonio, thank you for calling out. There could be an issue. I'll go see if I can fix that. Uh, these sessions continue every Monday at six, uh, six AM to seven AM until early mid-June. And I'll have a new ACP up soon. I got you all's feedback and I'll drop that link again if I can go find it real quick. Um, but please let me know if you have burning uh, thoughts on which ACP we should do, do next. Uh, and of course, join us in Discord uh, for live chat throughout the week and more information about what's going on. And that's about all on JSM Service Management. Uh, so as usual, thank you all for joining me. Not next week, it's Memorial Day. There's a holiday? We get holidays? All right, team. Um, I don't know how many people are in chat, but should we move next week's session given the US holiday? Uh, and I do wanna be sensitive that, you know, these sessions are not just US-centric. Um, so curious if folks think we should bump next week. Uh, please be on the lookout uh, for an email either through Bevy where you may have signed up or on my YouTube. Uh, I've got a one vote for yes. Either way, we will do assets. It might just be in two weeks instead of one. But, excuse me. But I do wanna be available with folks internationally, non-US-based would refer to do it still. Uh, I've got one vote for yes and no more votes, so I'll keep soliciting feedback. Uh, thank you for pointing that out, Justin. I don't have much of a concept of holidays anymore, unfortunately. But sounds like I may end up moving it. All right, either way, I gotta go figure out what happened to assets. Uh, thank you all again. I really appreciate you all learning with me. Um, it's helped me learn a lot of stuff. Uh, and next, next time, whether it's next week or in two weeks, uh, we'll be talking about assets in Jira. So thank you all again. Have a great day wherever you are and looking forward to seeing you around here again soon.